Morning, everybody.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning, everyone.
Has everybody had their coffee? You're all so quiet.
I was actually just trying to think how I could get away to get another coffee before we started.
Wait, yeah, three minutes.
Steve, don't you have an assistant to run there for you?
Yeah. I would never ask them to do that. The coffee's a me thing.
Decided not to have a coffee to try to stay a little bit more relaxed.
Morning yoga, chief.
Yeah, actually, I've been getting into some morning meditation, Caroline. Thank you. It's actually quite helpful.
It helps.
I haven't touched my toes in 20 years, so yoga is... But meditation is about as far as I can go. Something about a fused spine that prohibits me from bending well these days.
I love the joys of aging.
Gain in wisdom and we lose in physicality.
Yes, better than the alternative, though.
Way better, yeah.
It's about role modeling what we should all be drinking, a nice, healthy, clean glass of water.
I had to achieve the alternative. It's not a good thing.
That's good.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Rob.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Sandy. See, you have all of your well-selected budget implements behind you.
Yeah, that's right. This is for cutting the budget right here.
I didn't want to go that far with the analogy, but I appreciate that you have.
It's good morning.
Maybe there's some hammer and nails in there for building as well.
Oh, yes, I think so.
Okay, just realized I don't seem to have my correct notes, but... It's gonna be a morning like that. I don't have my notes. I think I'd have to go off and do it again, so we're just gonna wait. Good morning, everyone. I would like to start this special board meeting for November 3rd, 2021. I'd like to start by recognizing that Ottawa is located on the unceded and unsurrendered territory of the Algonquin-Anishnaubic Nation. The peoples of the Algonquin-Anishnaubic Nation have lived on this territory for millennia. Their culture and presence have nurtured and continue to nurture this land. The Ottawa Police Services Board honors the peoples and the lands of the Algonquin-Anishnaubic Nation. Today, Ottawa is home to approximately 40,000 First Nations Inuit Métis people. Ottawa's indigenous community is diverse, representing many nations, languages, and customs. The Ottawa Police Services Board honors all First Nations, Inuit, Métis people, and their valuable past and present contributions to this land. We are currently broadcasting on Zoom and live streaming on YouTube. Given this meeting is being held electronically, I want to caution, there is always a possibility of technical difficulties. Should we receive any disruptions, I would like to ask everyone to remain patient as we work to fix and resume the meeting just as soon as possible. Now proceed with the confirmation of the agenda, so that the Ottawa Police Services Board confirmed the agenda of November 3rd, 2021. Is that meeting confirmed? Agenda confirmed.
Confirmed.
Thank you. So our only item of business today is the 2022 draft operating and capital budgets. Today is a special meeting of the board for the purpose of tabling the draft 2022 operating and capital budgets for the Ottawa Police Service. Since we are only tabling the budget today, I want to remind board members that any questions posed to staff should be very high-level and only process-related questions. We will delve into the budget once we've had an opportunity to look at it and review it. And our first opportunity for that will be on November 9th at the FAC meeting, where we will hear delegations or at the board meeting on November 22nd. Before I turn things over to the chief and his staff for the budget presentation, I'd like to provide some context for this budget. Very early on, and in fact, directly after last year's budget process, this board voiced its intent to work with the service to look for ways to reduce or freeze the 2022 budget. We heard calls for change, and we committed to making our very best efforts to do what we could do to bend the cost curve and only ask for the resources needed for the provision of adequate and effective policing in the city of Ottawa. The board went on to provide even more specific direction to the service on the budget. We directed the chief to develop the 2022 budget with a standing, with a starting point of 0%. With a clearly articulated justification for any additional resources needed to meet new pressures, maintain services, and invest in new areas to support strategic directions. Having this level of detailed information will enable the board to make decisions about where we should be investing, divesting, or maintaining resources more transparently to meet the needs of the OPS and address the expectations from the community. The board recognizes we are sitting at a critical juncture where policing is being reimagined in the broader context of community safety and well-being. And while there remains a rule for police in advancing community safety and well-being, we recognize that certain types of calls would be better dealt with by other service providers who are better equipped to handle them. The board shares the same goals as the service and the public at large, to have safer communities in our city, to reduce crime, and to ensure that all people are treated fairly in their interactions with police. The board looks forward to hearing input from members of the public over the next couple of weeks, as this will be another critical input informing the board's decision-making around the 2022 budget. And with that, chief, I will turn things over to you for the budget presentation.
Sure, thank you. We're having some technical challenges on this end, so I'm gonna ask all of our members to turn off their cameras so we can conserve some of the bandwidth here. And chair, I may also turn off my camera just to make sure that we don't glitch during this part. The presentation on the screen will follow along with the script, and at the end, we'll try to get our cameras back on, but just ask your indulgence there. So Chair Deans, board, thank you very much. Good morning, bonjour, Quay. I will also do a land acknowledgement, as you've done on behalf of the board. I will do on behalf of the Ottawa Police Service. Ottawa was built on the unceded and unsurrendered Algonquin-Anishinaubie Territory. The peoples of the Algonquin-Anishinaubie Nation have lived on this territory for millennia. Their culture and presence have nurtured and continue to nurture this land. The Ottawa Police Service honors the peoples of the land, the peoples and the land of the Algonquin-Anishinaubie Nation. The Ottawa Police Service honors all First Nations Inuit and Métis peoples and their valuable past and present contributions to this land. Chair, I also wish to acknowledge all of our OPS members who have worked hard every day to serve and protect the community. In fact, every day, every hour of the day over the last 20 months since the pandemic arrived, as well as all of our community partners who work with our service members to provide the best possible safety, health, and wellness for the million-plus residents of the city of the nation's capital. The Ottawa Police Service has submitted this draft budget to the board to ensure the continued ability of the Ottawa Police to provide adequate and effective policing in the city of Ottawa, while also demonstrating an efficient use of police resources and taxpayer dollars. This draft 2022 budget was also constructed to ensure that the Ottawa Police Service complies with and achieves the board's four strategic priorities: advancing community policing, modernizing the police service, supporting member wellness, improving equity diversity, and inclusion. The submitted draft 2022 budget was built in a way that complies with the board's budget-related directions, motions, and resolutions. Specifically, the budget enables the optimal allocation of current resources to match workload and the effective engagement of community assets to share a number of meetings and survey and evidence-based research from international best practices. Combination of elements of these elements significantly inform the final budget submission. Alter change and improved service delivery. Changes and improvements that were requested by board members, community members, and OPS members alike. It has been extremely challenging to balance the desire to flatten the cost curve of the budget while trying to meet the increasingly diverse and growing demands for service and changes both inside and outside of the Ottawa Police Service. Time tense and most in-depth budget process to date. The process has involved a substantial level of engagement with community members and OPS members. This includes all board delegations, survey... Silence in the last minute. The Ottawa Police Service Member Engagement Survey and the Diversity Pro Equity Diversity Inclusion Assessment. It has involved some of the most extensive internal reviews and efficiency efforts, and has touched every command, directorate, unit, and section in the organization. A wide variety of Ottawa Police Service members, including the senior leadership team, the majority of our senior non-commissioned officers, middle managers, and frontline members have made direct contributions to this draft 2022 budget submission. The end state vision of this budget plan is to build a police service where every community member and every service member feels respected, supported, protected, and accepted, no matter their background, status, or circumstances. The Ottawa Police Service remains committed to supporting the board as it fulfills its important governance role of reviewing and considering the 2022 budget. Chair, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, you've been cutting in and out quite a bit. I got the gist of what you were saying, but you were really cutting out. I'm not exactly sure what to do about that.
Yeah, Chair, if I could just ask a few minutes of indulgence, I'll see if we can get a technical fix here.
Yeah, it might be better before we go to the presentation.
Good, Chair. I've switched chairs. I've been taking over Deputy Chief Bell's office. I'm in your hands, Chair. There was some information that was helpful for context in the previous piece, but if you feel the board is adequately informed in the context, I'll move to the overview of the presentation now.
Let me just ask them, chief, because I mean, the budget is very important. I want to make sure that they feel they heard what they needed to hear. So can you just take that slide screen down for a second so I can see the board members? Thanks. Okay, is there anyone that wants the chief to go back and redo his presentation? Are you good to move on? So if you want him to go back, just show me your hand. No? Okay, we're good, chief. Go ahead with the presentation.
Thank you very much. We will have to switch. Steve and I will have a couple of switches of seats, so again, forgive that. Okay, I'm going to be calling on Chief Administration Officer Deputy Chief Steve Bell and our Chief Financial Officer Cyril Rogers over the course of this presentation to assist me with providing the following information. This presentation will cover a review of the relevant board budget directions, resolutions, and motions, the process used by the Ottawa Police Service to fulfill the board's direction in developing this budget, the context of community safety and well-being in the city of Ottawa, the budget 2022 highlights, including detailed financial information covering the following areas: the forecasted budget pressures from November 2020 to November 2021, the efforts made by the Ottawa Police Service to mitigate the budget pressures, the results to date of the board's community consultations plan, and our own ongoing community stakeholder and member engagement efforts, the business rationale for the new investments in the Ottawa Police Service's draft budget, and finally, the breakdown of the operating and capital budgets included in this overall submission. I want to thank Deputy Bell and CFO Rogers for their leadership in this process, as well as all the board members, OPS members, and community members who have meaningfully contributed to the development of the draft Ottawa Police Service 2022 budget. I will now turn things over to Deputy Chief Bell for the next section of the presentation.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much. Chair Deans, I've never appreciated your anticipation of technical glitches more than this morning, so thank you for your indulgence. I am gonna shut my camera off just so that we can make sure we hold steady through this, so thank you. So thank you, everyone. Good morning to the board members. We're pretty excited to be here today. This has been a long, fulsome process that we've gone through. And as the chair reflected, the first day of our budget prep started one year ago with the tabling of last year's budget, when the board put forward a motion that directed us to give best efforts and work towards holding this year's budget at 2021 levels where possible. It also directed us to continue to work with the Finance and Audit Committee and look at ways that we could better refine and better meet these directions. So from that, we've actually engaged in a year-long, extensive, deliberate, and very methodical process to achieve the product that you're seeing in front of you today. This wasn't our usual process, because we were really trying to develop not our usual budget. We'd spent time listening to many voices, both from our community, from our board, and from our internal membership. We were able, with the board's support, to engage in some active and fulsome consultation where we heard from the community at large, but specifically tried to focus on listening to those communities most adversely affected by policing. We've also tried to take a really hard look at ourselves. We've done a deep dive internally, and we found that there's some things that we do well that we need to keep doing. There's some areas that we don't have enough investment and aren't doing a good enough job. And there's areas, like the chair spoke about at the beginning, where we're doing work that could better be provided by other members of our community and our social service providers. From all that work, we're tabling a budget today that we believe reflects what we heard from our community, what the board is seeking, and where the OPS should be going from a change agenda. So today, we're gonna outline the budget that establishes the financial framework to deliver on the improvements that have been called for by everyone. So the budget direction that we started with is stated here. We've actively followed this direction to build the tape, the budget we're tabling, and it outlines, as is outlined by this direction. We started from a 0% increase and have looked to demonstrate any needs above that. We're trying, we're attempting to provide clear explanation and articulation around the pressures that we're facing as a police service, and we are developing and presenting a budget that continues to deliver on adequate and effective policing for the city of Ottawa delivered by the Ottawa Police Service. We've also included in the submission that's before you today deliberate work plans around delivering better data sets that help guide our deployment and operations, investments in areas that contribute further and build on the strategic priorities set out by the board, investments that continue in the organization and cultural change that we began in 2019 with the OPS, as well as aggressive and achievable efficiency targets within the next year. We can go to the next slide, Kevin. Thank you. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. So what's before you today is a table that documents and outlines the motions that we've received from the board and the actions that we've taken to achieve those. On the left-hand side, you'll see the directions that we received, and on the right-hand side, you'll see the activities that we engaged in. We've had many consultations, many discussions, many directions from the board over the past year, and we have, we believe faithfully complied with all of those directions to ultimately get to the place we are today. All through these steps, we've worked collaboratively with the board, particularly the Finance and Audit Committee Working Group. And I personally like to thank them for all of their investment, all of their support, all of their determination to get to a place where we wanted to get to. The various directions and motions provided us an opportunity to ensure that we took time to listen to our community. It also provided us the opportunity to make sure that we looked as hard at ourselves as we could to examine the services we were delivering and how we could better deliver those. From all of this work, I believe that we've come and built a budget around what the community has identified as the needs and expectations, as well as looking at how we trim our bottom line, control the cost curve of policing, and set ambitious and realistic efficiency targets. With that context of how we started to build this budget, I'm going to turn it back over to the chief, who's going to go through and identify the landscape and context of policing in Ottawa that we built around.
Chairboard, I'll continue with the camera off as well, just trying to stabilize the system here. It's a very busy slide in front of you. The context within which police services in Canada operate has never been as complex as it is today is within this context in mind that the 2022 budget was drafted. The graphic on this slide provides an overview of a range of complexities that underpin this budget submission. I won't read all the content in the slide, but will highlight a few of the more impactful areas of the analysis. On the outside corner of the graphic, you'll see citizen priorities. Predominantly, this came through the four-month budget consultation plan that we executed on behalf of the board, but it also includes the ongoing efforts of community engagement. The priorities that have been identified there include road safety, mental health and addictions, specifically the ability for the service to integrate services with other agencies and/or refer those calls for service to other agencies, gender-based violence, street violence, and guns that relate to gang activity, particularly protection of personal property. In each of these areas of citizen priorities, we know that we can and should form more effective partnerships, that there are opportunities for referral and diversion, and you'll hear about some of those opportunities and investment areas later on in the presentation. Just this past week, the city of Ottawa passed its Community Safety and Well-Being Plan. That's directly below the citizen priorities. The priorities within the city of Ottawa's Community Safety and Well-Being Plan are around housing, addressing systemic racism, again, mental health and well-being, systems change. Systems change is an important piece. When you unpack that particular one, it talks about the ecosystem of service providers, from police, fire, and ambulance through to those in the healthcare sector, the education sector, the not-for-profit sector, and leaders across civil society. Coordinating our system efforts, individual system efforts, to create a more effective ecosystem that is easier for people who need to access a variety of services at different times of the day and the week and the year across this vast geographic geography that is Ottawa, that is the system change aspect. And finally, and not least, is financial security and poverty reduction. I'm sure areas that all of you are familiar with and are equally committed to addressing as we are in the Ottawa Police Service. Within the areas of the pie chart that are on this graphic here, you'll see a high-level analysis of the changes that have been taking place over the last several years or have been taking place at a rapid rate within the last year itself. So you've got technological, legal, environmental, organizational, media, governance, and economical changes. Again, I won't go through all the areas in there. Police services across Canada, and obviously, the police service in the nation's capital of Canada, are facing unprecedented challenges and engaging in long overdue cultural and structural changes. The traditional model of policing has reached a tipping point, resulting from a confluence of factors, including overstretched, overburdened, and undersupervised police service members, systemic discrimination, particularly anti-black and anti-indigenous racism, workplace sexual violence and harassment, charter and human rights issues, inadequate social safety net and social safety infrastructure, and inappropriate inadequate supports for mental health, addictions, housing, and the other priorities so well articulated within the city of Ottawa's Community Safety and Well-Being Plan. This has all been compounded over the last two years by the continued social and economic impacts of a global pandemic. There's been new legislation and regulatory requirements, including pandemic-driven public health measures. There's been rapid growth in the city of Ottawa, rapid advances in technology, shifting demographics, increased police demands to address online fraud, street violence, stunt driving, hate crimes, as well as the ongoing opioid crisis. High-profile interventions where police use force has also led for calls for police reform and demands to reallocate policing budgets to social services and other appropriate agencies, including 211 and 311 services. These events have had an extraordinary impact on communities across Canada, who are now demanding real and accelerated change. They have also led to declining levels of public trust and confidence in policing. Without public trust, the police cannot legitimately exercise their duty nor effectively support community safety and well-being. These challenges have had a significant impact on the physical, emotional, and mental well-being of community members and police service members alike. Next slide, please, Kevin. The Ottawa Police Service faces unique challenges beyond those experienced by police services elsewhere in the country. As the largest Canadian municipality geographically and the policing jurisdiction of the nation's capital, Ottawa covers 2,778 square kilometers and spans 83 kilometers from east to west, greater than the combined areas of the cities of Toronto, Montreal, Calgary, Edmonton, and Vancouver. Furthermore, the area is more than 80% rural, with more farmland than any other city in Canada. This geographic diversity creates the need for service remodels that are tailored to urban, suburban, and rural needs, all supported by specialized equipment and capabilities for policing in the national capital region. This results in a complex staffing and deployment pressures, along with increased vehicle fuel and maintenance costs. The Ottawa Police Service is also responsible for public safety and security at sites of national significance, as well as the many events, including but not limited to multi-jurisdictional police and national security operations, state visits, national celebrations, public protests and demonstrations, all of which take place almost every day of the year, right here in the city of Ottawa. Like many cities in Canada, Ottawa is also rapidly diversifying. One in four residents is an immigrant with 53% of new arrivals coming from Asia and the Middle East, 17% from Africa, and 15% from Europe. This is reflected in the multitude of languages spoken in Ottawa, in addition to English and French, including Arabic, Chinese, Spanish, Italian, and German, just to name a few. The graphic on this slide shows that of the Big 12 municipal police service in Canada, the Ottawa Police Service has the second lowest budget allocation at 9.4%, the second lowest police-to-population ratio at 541, but has the fifth lowest crime severity index amongst Canada's Big 12 municipal police jurisdictions. These stats provide a clear indication that the OPS is one of the most lean police services in Canada, but whose members provide one of the highest levels of public safety in Canada. However, this positive picture is fragile. The fiscal accountability requirements and the police performance requirements is at risk without stable predictable funding that includes investments to address the increasing stress on community members and police service members. We must demonstrate fiscal accountability in the use of public funds. We must also make needed strategic investments to improve how the Ottawa Police Service delivers services, particularly to the most racialized, marginalized, and disenfranchised community members. These investments must enable a change in our operating model to focus more on prevention, early intervention, and integrated operations with our many community partners, focused through the city of Ottawa's Community Safety and Well-Being Plan. These investments must allow the Ottawa Police Service to continue recruiting and hiring a more qualified and diverse workforce that better reflects and respects the communities who we serve and protect while meeting their different expectations around police service delivery. Next slide, please, Kevin. In July 2021, the board approved an unprecedented community consultation plan in support of its 2022 budget approval process. The board's plan included a range of diverse consultation methods to be implemented over a four-month span. The Ottawa Police Service ensured that all individual elements of the plan were approved by the board. The Ottawa Police Service also sought input from the Community Equity Council and other members of the community in the development of the consultation questions and the techniques used themselves. The approved plan included innovative data collection methods and efforts to collect input from a larger number of Ottawa residents in order to increase engagement levels, particularly from our BIPOC communities. Consultation processes also solicited quantitative and qualitative inputs from stakeholders, residents, community groups, city councillors, Ottawa Police Service members. Surveys were distributed in multiple languages, including English, French, Arabic, Spanish, Mandarin, Somali, Inuktitut. Additionally, external polls, audits, scans, and analysis were conducted. In total, the budget consultation process reports encapsulates five surveys with over 8,000 combined participants. We had community forums, small group discussions, one-on-one conversations, of course, the board delegations, and a wide variety of emails and other written communication. In addition, the Ottawa Police Service offered meetings to all city councillors between May and July to provide an update on the 2021 budget commitments and change process. A second series of meetings took place throughout September and October, during which the Ottawa Police Service sought input from each councillor about the needs of their individual wards to further inform the 2022 budget priorities. Throughout the consultation process, we consistently heard the following: police services matter to Ottawa residents, but those same residents want improvements in the Ottawa Police Service. The vast majority of respondents provided feedback to the feedback on the ways in which the police need to improve, particularly in terms of building partnership and engagement with diverse marginalized and racialized communities. The next trend was residents want a new approach responding to social issues, particularly in the area of mental health and addictions, in order to have better outcomes and better responses. The desired role for the Ottawa Police Service in these responses varies significantly, but it's clear that a new approach is needed, one that combines our efforts more effectively and directly with other service providers. The next area is that public trust has been eroded. Distrust of the Ottawa Police Service has gone up by 19% since 2018. Nonetheless, the majority of respondents from various consultations want to see the police improve so as to enable the rebuilding of the community's trust. The next area, there are pronounced community safety issues, top of which are mental health and addictions, road and pedestrian safety, violence against women, gender-based violence, and gun, gang, and drug-related street violence. The last trend area is ongoing investment needed for improving inclusion, diversity, equity, and anti-racism efforts. Changes to funding brought changes that are needed so that we can continue to build on our efforts to increase diversity, equity, and inclusion within the service while addressing racism and all forms of discrimination. Next slide, please, Kevin. The Ottawa Police Service Command and Senior Leadership Team is committed to being fiscally accountable in the use of public funds while building a better and different police service. This commitment to change started two years ago when I took office and continues to this day, and indeed, it will continue every day going forward. The current Command and Senior Leadership Team is the most diverse ever and one of the most talented group of police leaders in the Ottawa Police Service's history. The depth of talent and breadth of diversity flows throughout the service. This is perhaps best exemplified by the new generation of highly qualified, experienced, and diverse police recruits hired over the last two years. In that time, we've increased the quality and diversity of recruits such that 33% more are females, 35% racialized, 58% with college diplomas, 68% with university degrees, and 76% of recruits come with social services experiences ranging from previous careers at John Howard Society, the Ottawa Distress Centre, along with other mental health, addiction, social services, youth outreach, and community-based organizations. This new generation of officers are already leaders in their community, and they will become the future leaders of this police service. In the same timeframe, we have implemented a neighborhood policing model that will ensure Ottawa Police Service invests its resources and aligns its operations to be more focused on upstream prevention, more able to form effective community partnerships, and more capable of working in support of the city of Ottawa's now-approved Community Safety and Well-Being Plan. The most visible element of the neighborhood policing strategy is the six urban neighborhood resource teams, who have been joined this year by the implementation of the suburban and rural neighborhood resource teams. The expansion of the Neighborhood Resource Team program will ensure that all of Ottawa's residents have more responsive and customized police services, while also having greater access to frontline police officers whose primary duty is to work in and with the community. In fact, 13% of Ottawa Police Service officers are now redeployed and assigned full-time duties that focus primarily on preventing crime, forming community partnerships, and/or improving community safety and well-being. This is one of, if not the highest, percentages of redeployments within Canadian policing. With support of the board, the Ottawa Police Service has made important investments to meet the much-needed and long-overdue cultural changes, the creation of a new organization, of new organizational capacity for inclusion, diversity, equity, and anti-racism, the implementation of innovative pilot projects, the overhaul of enterprise risk management systems, coupled with the application of determined leadership at all levels of the Ottawa Police Service, is resulting in a more healthy, safe, and welcoming organization, much as been done in the past two years, but there is still a lot more to be done. That said, without adequate resources, included needing strategic investments outlined later in this budget, we will not sustainably be able to meet the core needs of our community and our members. We will not be able to meaningfully achieve the board's strategic priorities, and will not be able to effectively meet the new Police Services Act legislative responsibility to support the implementation of Community Safety and Well-Being Plan. I'll turn things back over now to Steve to get into a deeper dive within the budget itself.
Thank you, Chief. And so what I'd like to now do is we're going to walk through the board, through the various areas of focused investment that we've included in this 2022 budget. It's been referred to many, many times. The first area I'm going to talk about is our call referral program. One of the most common themes we've heard through every conversation, one of the most common directions and consensus that everyone has is that policing community need to work together to find the best resources to respond to low-risk, low-acuity calls for service that are currently attended by the police. In this budget, we're outlining a $400,000 investment into a program that will develop and implement a plan to identify appropriate calls for service that can be referred to more appropriate community-based agencies for response, develop a system where those calls can be referred for those alternative response, and then ensure that those calls are responded to and that the members of the public who called for assistance are actually receiving the supports that they need. We know there's several programs in other cities like Toronto, Eugene, Oregon, Denver, Colorado, that will be about, continue to be evaluated, continue to be looked at, and right-sized for the Ottawa context. This, what we're looking at is a real plan to deliver the changes that everyone is calling for. We'll need support of our community. We'll need help from our partners to be able to achieve this over the next year. But our target is a 5% decrease in calls for service in 2022, and another 5% over '23 and '24, for a total 15% decrease in calls for service in 2024 after the successful implementation. implementation of this programme. Building on that call referral, one of the things that we identified early on was it was really important in all of this work that we need to do a really good, strong, sound job of being able to partner and collaborate with our partner agencies while we look at managing and protecting the privacy rights and expectations of the people who we deliver service to. In this budget, we'll be looking to invest $100,000 in privacy-based legal advice that will allow for the development of memorandums of understanding to appropriately share information with partnering agencies, provide us expert advice on privacy legislation and regulations that govern that information sharing and build on the current relationships with the Office of the Information and Privacy Commission of Ontario with the goal of building new and better practices around sharing information. The anticipated results out of this for us will be a better system to share information that protects the right of the people who we are serving as well as doesn't limit the ability to share with appropriate agencies so that those people get best results from all of our collective services. The next area I'm going to focus on is around the development and continuation of the development of an Indigenous strategy. This is work that will continue, that was started in 2021 and be based around the investments we've made into community-based supports that have partnered with the Indigenous Women's Safety Table and will complete the work and implementation of a holistic OPS Indigenous strategy. We've heard clearly from our city's Indigenous leaders that this shouldn't be about more policing to those peoples. It needs to be about better collaborative work with our community Indigenous service providers. This work will also build on our commitment to address all of the recommendations of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission and the National Inquiry into Murder to Missing Indigenous Women and Girls. This work is at really early stages and that's important to highlight because we could not do this work and will not do this work without the guidance and direction from our Indigenous community, from the Ottawa Aboriginal Coalition and our Community Equity Council. This needs to be a collaborative set of work where we take direction, best input and insight from those partners. Our two hundred thousand, our anticipated $200,000 investment will see collaborative development of programmes and staffing models that will provide specific culturally competent service for First Nations, Métis and Inuit people living in Ottawa. We're also going to look to create referral pathways to better leverage the existing and future and in future-based community Indigenous services. The work that we're envisioning will look to model the Ontario Provincial Police's Indigenous Policing Bureau unit that will be refined and more made specific to Ottawa through the input of our Ottawa Indigenous leaders. The anticipated results of this investment are improved cultural competence services to our Indigenous community as well as better referral systems to existing culturally appropriate service providers that can provide better support to our Indigenous people. Building on that, we're also looking at an investment in investigative change strategy. Through 2021, with the knowledge and authority of the board, we've gone out and hired two community-based positions in our Violence Against Women sector. We've seen great success, great input and great impact from those positions. So this investment will be looking at investing $500,000 to have three more community-based and supported positions within our criminal investigation section. These positions will specifically be focused around our missing persons, homicide, guns and gangs and drugs, as well as continue to support our human trafficking, sexual assault and child abuse and partner sexual assault and child abuse and partner assault. The anticipated outcomes for this investment will be better outcomes for the victims that we are supporting who are victims of crime as well as enhanced victim-centric services. And that will be done through the delivery of joint risk assessments, post-charge diversion programmes and better community support referrals. The next area we want to continue to focus on is around our Cultural Change and Respectful Workplace Programme. This will continue the work that was identified and started in 2019. This year's work is specifically shaped around recommendations that we have received from our most recent member survey, the Sexual Violence and Harassment Project and the DiversaPro Report on our EDI Assessment and Cultural Competency Inventory. This will be a $2.2 million investment that will see the creation of an independent Office of Workplace Investigations, staffed by two lawyers, the hiring of a curriculum designer, the expansion, an expanded investment in cultural change programmes and supports to those programmes, as well as continued investment in member and organisational cultural competency work. What we anticipate to see from this investment is a more inclusive and respectful workplace, but also a membership that can deliver improved public service to our community through increase, through an approach to change that will see an increase in public trust, achieving a higher duty of care to our communities and leveraging Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan in a greater way. We also know that our members do an exceptionally difficult job and have an immense amount of challenges and stressors that they see in the work they do. We will continue to build further on our years-long work around supporting our members in this challenging profession. This year's budget includes a $400,000 investment that will bring an in-house psychologist within to the walls of the OPS, hire a return-to-work specialist to best support our members to get the supports they need to enable them to return to work and invest in a wellness analyst to enable the OPS to have better trend and issue analysis so we can more proactively respond to emerging issues. From this, we anticipate to see better supports and treatment plans for our members, an increase in the number of employees who will successfully be returned to work, a decrease in the duration of absences of our members and a reduced cost associated with our current WSIB and LTD claims. An area that we focused on over the last year, particularly through dialogues with the board, is about the need for us to leverage and utilise the data that we have and explore areas in data that we don't currently, we don't currently see or utilise. This investment around data-driven science optimisation, service optimisation, will look to optimise and refine the data that OPS holds with the outcome of using the information to better direct and align our operations as well as provide the public more information about the operations of the Ottawa Police Service. This $700,000 investment will see the development of an internally hosted service that will enable both the police and public to access a data-sharing platform. It will develop and implement an IMIT data strategy that will support the work underway to find efficiencies and reduce the cost of policing and it'll allow for a more integrated information sharing platform with partner agencies. The anticipated results for us around this are better access to user-friendly data for our community so that they can have line of sight on the operations of the Ottawa Police Service that will create better communication and better information flow to them, as well as an internal data-driven service optimisation programme that will see cost reductions and enhance service provision. The final area that I want to highlight in terms of investments is around enterprise risk and resource management. This investment will see the expansion of our operations centre to be able to provide 24/7, 365 support to the organisation as well as invest in our capacity to deliver complex enterprise-wide projects. The $700,000 investment will see an increase of two positions within our operations centre to allow for 24-hour coverage as well as the investment in three project management specialists to support the ongoing and identified work that we've just gone through. The anticipated results for us within this investment will be better round-the-clock support for operations that will enable oversight to ensure that we have most appropriate responses and most appropriate referrals where appropriate. It will also improve our project tracking and management to enable all of the projects that I've just discussed at an enterprise level to make sure that we are achieving our timelines and achieving our anticipated outcomes. So that's, that's an identification of the areas that we are looking for investment. Kevin, if you can go to the next slide. What we are going to do now is I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer Cyril Rogers, who will go through the financial details about how we are going to fund, finance all of this and the ongoing operations. Over to you, Cyril.
Thank you. Thank you, DC Bell and Chief for the presentation at this point. So I'm going to walk you through the financial slides and the details that have been outlined in the forefront of this presentation. So first off, this, what we have is $14.7 million were the pressures to maintain our services. This services is broken down into 11.9 million, which is allocated to compensation and benefit increases. These increases are all driven by collective bargaining agreements and requirements that we we need to adhere to in terms of providing staffing in adequate and effective policing. Eighty-two percent of our budget is allocated to staffing costs, which covers the salaries and benefits associated with that service delivery model. Two-point-eight million of that fourteen-point-seven million is additional contract and inflationary obligation pressures that we have. The supply chain, the market conditions, external market conditions have an immense strain as a result of the pandemic and resulted in significant increase in various costs across all products and services that we deliver on. As an example, our medical benefits have seen a twenty percent increase. Our dental benefits have seen a seventeen percent increase. Fuel, our fuel costs are increasing seventeen percent. There's a variety of increased inflationary costs required to kind of maintain adequate and effective policing. From an FD growth perspective, there is zero growth in the 2022 budget. This excludes the thirty growth that was planned and forecasted in the previously 2022 budget. So zero growth included for 2022. From a new services perspective, DC Bell outlined the significant investments that we are investing in towards change and moving forward the Organisation and Transformation Plan. On the efficiency side, there's $5.1 million where the efficiencies included in the 2022 budget. These efficiencies is a commitment by the organisation to continue to reduce the operating costs and reduce the cost curve while maintaining core objectives and delivering adequate and effective policing as we move forward. Some of these efficiencies capture 600K allocated to the reduction via fleet and facilities rationalisation. Additional $600,000 reduction as part of the process to outsource our collision reporting operations. This is better achieved through outsourcing at a lower cost but while maintaining service delivery. There's an additional $2 million management intervention strategy in place. As we navigated through the various challenges of the pandemic, the organisation has been able to pivot and adjust to the various challenges and improve ways of delivering services and spending money in areas such as travel, training, equipment purchases and other various supplies. This commitment will continue in 2022 as the organisations will achieve further savings in those areas. In addition, there's another 1.9 million allocated to various alignments and efficiencies throughout the organisation and dedication by the service. User fees and revenues are increasing by 800K revenue. This is broken up into two components. Our user fees aligns to a policy adopted by the board. In addition, we do have an increase in international capital grant revenue for 2022, which is reflected in this number. This brings the total requirement for 2022 budget increase to $14 million. This is broken down into two components. The Ottawa Police Services Board receives its pro rata share of the assessment growth. The assessment growth plan for 2022 is 1.7%, which reflects $5.2 million. The residual $8.8 million is via the police tax levy increase, which reflects a 2.86% tax, police tax levy increase. Next slide, please. What this means. So basically, of the $14 million increase, this brings the OPS net operating budget requirement to $346.5 million. As previously stated, this is broken out by two components. The 1.7% assessment growth at $5.2 million and the police tax rate increase of 2.86% or 8.8 million. For the average homeowner in the City of Ottawa at a value of 415,000 households in the urban area, this reflects a $19 increase and it brings the total cost for the average urban household again at 415K to $663 per year. Next slide. The Ottawa, the OPS 2022 operating budget is broken down into various components. As previously mentioned, the largest cost driver of the organisation is compensation. This is a salary and benefit cost required to deliver our service. Eighty-two percent of the OPS budget is allocated to compensation, which is driven by collective bargaining agreements, which are in place and managed through the board. The next base component of the budget is allocated to material supplies and services at nine percent. This reflects, again, the various costs required to deliver adequate and effective policing. Components such as fuel, uniforms, safety supplies, maintenance to our fleet. Again, all costs are required to deliver adequate and effective policing. Six percent or $24 million is required for capital formation. As per the Police Services Act, the OPS is required to not only fund its operating costs, but also its capital costs required to sustain and deliver adequate and effective policing. These things cover facilities, renovations, retrofits to maintain assets at a good state of repair, IT infrastructure requirements, purchasing of our vehicles for fleet to deliver the service. And finally, 12.4 million or three percent of the budget is allocated to city costs. Service continues to work closely with the city to ensure that we are as efficient as possible and integrate services where we can be aligned, where the city can support the service in a more effective way. Examples such as payroll, procurement, legal services, program facilities and maintenance is some areas that we leverage the city for support in terms of delivering the service. Next slide. The 2022 capital budget includes $36 million investment. This includes 12.6 million allocated to the annual renewal and life cycle of assets across the various areas, such as fleet. The annual programme of 4.5 million ensures that we can adequately and maintain our fleet vehicles and assets in a good state of repair to deliver services. Additional investments required across our infrastructure and telecommunications area and of course facility lifecycle at 2.4 million, which ensures that we maintain our facilities at a good state of repair. $23 million is earmarked for strategic initiatives. Again, additional infrastructure improvements in Elgin and the Queen's Hill locations to leverage additional capacity and IT and comms to an investment of $15 million, which ensures that we have the redundant capacity and business continuity to deliver on our comms and IT services in the event of a primary failure of this infrastructure. Next slide. I was just funded, oh sorry, the 2022, 2031 capital budget forecast is a total forecast of $253 million, which reflects an average investment, annual investment of 25 million. This is mainly funded by own sources. So this is mainly funded by the Police Services tax levy funding, which is 74% at the pay-go reserves. The investments are flowed through our operating to our reserves to make sure we have the funding available to fund our capital requirements. One percent is funded via revenue. These are this example, this source would be as we decommission fleet vehicles, we do send those off to auction, so we do get recovery on some of those costs. And finally, the residual 25% is really through debt financing, which we manage through the city support. Next slide. As per requirement and direction from the board, we do provide a 2023 to 2025 three-year forecast. This forecast captures maintaining services as previously stated, which is mainly driven by our compensation and benefits obligations as adhered to by the collective bargaining agreements. Assumptions related to inflationary cost increases moving forward, in addition to additional growth and capacities to support the organisation in the growing city of Ottawa. There's continued investments in new services and continued commitment by the organisation to be committed to continuous improvement and finding additional efficiencies each year going forward. This results in assumed assessment growth of an annual 1.5% growth going forward and the required police tax rates falling from 3.16 down to 2.52 in the outer years. Next slide. Finally, the budget timetable, we tabled the budget today, followed by three, two opportunities for public delegations. The FAC meeting will be held on November 9th, which there will be an opportunity for delegations to come speak. Following that, on November 26, 22nd, sorry, there will be the regular public delegations at the board regular review. From there, the budget will then rise to council for final adoption on December 8th. Before I end it, back to the chief and Steve. I would like to extend my great gratitude and thanks to the finance team for the long owners' process that we followed in the development of this budget. This truly has been a budget that started last year at this time. It's been a 12-month process where we spent lots of time, late nights, developing, working with the team collaboratively across the organisation internally and externally. A big thanks to the manager of financial planning, John Sweet, and his team consisting of Preet, Heather, Sheila and Owen Bell. A small team that delivered on a mighty task, but together we were able to successfully be here today in this budget tailing. So again, a big thanks to the finance team. Over to you, Chief, or Steve Bell.
Thank you, Cyril. And before I continue on chair, this is also Cyril Rogers last week with the Ottawa Police Service. We had the pleasure of rating him away from the City of Ottawa to come here as CFO over a year ago. We had the pleasure of rating him away from the city of Ottawa to come here as CFO over a year ago. And Steve Cantalacris and his very sharp talent team have had the pleasure of rating Cyril back to the city of Ottawa. And I'd like to thank Cyril Rogers in particular for his leadership as a chief financial officer over the course of his full tenure here, as well as the leadership of him and his team to help to get us to this point where we're making this submission to the board. I started off my comments at the beginning of this presentation. I'm not sure whether or not they came through because of the technical challenges. But I again want to wish a, a, a thank you and a, and a great acknowledgement to all Ottawa Police Service members who have worked hard every day to serve and protect the community, every hour, every, of every day of the last 20 months of the pandemic, as well as our community partners who without, without whom we could not provide the safety and services in the city that they deserve. So I'll conclude again on an overview of the budget highlights. The 2022 budget process has been the number one priority for the Ottawa Police Service over the last 12 months. This has been the longest, most intense and most in-depth budget process to date. The draft budget demonstrates the Ottawa Police Service's commitment to fiscal accountability, its ability to mitigate massive fiscal pressures and its diligence in presenting business cases for needed investments. The draft Ottawa Police Service 22 budget will enable the Ottawa Police Service to continue the implementation of its multi-year plan for organizational and cultural change, changes that were requested by board members, community members and Ottawa Police Service members alike. It has been an extremely challenging, uh, it's been an extremely challenging period to balance the desire to flatten the cost curve of the budget while trying to meet the increasingly diverse and growing demands for service, police services and for change both inside and outside of the Ottawa Police Service. The Ottawa Police Service joins the board in its commitment to find that balance while building a truly different and better police service. That said, we must make investments to improve how the Ottawa Police Service delivers services, particularly to the most racialized, marginalized and disenfranchised community members. We must make investments to enable a change in our operating model to focus more on prevention, early intervention and integrated operations with our many community partners, particularly focused to the city of Ottawa's Community Safety Wellbeing Plan. We must make investments to continue recruiting and hiring a more qualified and diverse workforce, one that better reflects and respects the communities who we serve and protect. Without the resources in the draft Ottawa Police Service 2022 budget, we will not sustainably be able to meet the core needs of our community or our members. We will not be able to meaningfully achieve the board's strategic priorities. We will not effectively be able to meet the new Police Services Act's legislative responsibility to work in support of the city of Ottawa's Community Safety Wellbeing Plan. The draft OPS 2022 budget provides the resources to sustainably, meaningfully and effectively comply with the Police Services Act's legislative responsibility around delivering community police services, including crime prevention, order management, emergency response, victim services and criminal investigations. It allows us to communicate, cooperate, coordinate and in fact co-produce new integrated services and innovative new projects that support the city of Ottawa in assessing and addressing its community safety wellbeing plan priorities. It allows us to co-design, implement and evaluate ways to refer 911 calls for police services to 311, 211 or other more appropriate social service providers such that more people in Ottawa get the right services at the right time, achieving the right outcomes. It allows us to create more off-ramp opportunities out of the criminal justice system for Ottawa residents by using more effective pre and post-charge diversion programs, by implementing more victim-centered, trauma-informed investigative programs and by establishing more community-led restorative justice programs. And finally, it allows us to curate, analyze and utilize data more effectively internally and externally with our community partners, including using disaggregated demographic and race-based data. This is to ensure, all the while ensuring that data is used lawfully, ethically and safely to optimize the use of police resources while reducing the cost of those resources. Ultimately, we need to continue to change the Ottawa Police Service, its culture such that the police service is more trusted and is better able to create safer communities so that all people in Ottawa feel they are treated fairly in all interactions with the police. The Ottawa Police Service respectfully submits the draft Ottawa Police Service 2022 budget to the board. We remain committed in supporting the board as it fulfills its important fiduciary responsibilities in reviewing, in reviewing and considering the approval of the annual budget. Thank you. Merci beaucoup. Big witch.
Thank you very much, Cyril and Deputy Chief. For the presentation this morning, just a reminder to members of the board that this is the tabling of the budget this morning. I'm only entertaining process questions. We will delve into the details of the budget once we've had an opportunity to review it. Our first opportunity as a group to consider it is on November 9th, where we'll be hearing public delegations as well at the FAC meeting. So with that said, are there any process questions anyone has? Member Nerman?
Thank you, Chair. Just a beef process question. When we can expect the, the detailed budget copies delivered to us?
That will be delivered, delivered today. Member Nerman should be already in your inboxes. It's a large document. And if need be, we can provide hard copies.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I would like a hard copy. Does everyone want a hard copy?
Yeah, hard copy.
Yeah. Can you deliver hard copies to everyone as well, please?
This is being looked after already by the board office. You will be getting those today.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other process questions? Seeing none. Just a reminder that the budget tabling is significant, but it is no means the end of this process. It's our opportunity now to take this budget and to consider it line by line and to make decisions on it. So the board will have that first opportunity on, at the FAC meeting on November 9th and then of course on the day that we are planning to set the budget, which will be November 22nd, where we will also be hearing public delegations as we will on the 9th. So with that said, the recommendations today are one, that the Ottawa Police Services Board receive and table the Ottawa Police Service 2022 draft operating and capital budgets and two, that the Ottawa Police Services Board approve the Ottawa Police Service 2022 draft operating and capital budgets at the board meeting on November 22nd or possibly 23rd if, if we go into a second day, which we well might. So received and carried on those recommendations?
Received.
Okay, thank you. So the board's finance and audit committee will be meeting Tuesday, November 9th at 1:00 PM to hear from delegations on the budget. You can email Hannah Logan to be added to the speaker's list. Her email is available on the board's website. Our next regular meeting is on Monday, November 22nd at 4:00 PM. Thank you all and have a great day. Good journey.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.